Good afternoon and welcome to the February 13th Council Work Session. We'll talk about community safety, but you'll have to bear with me for a minute. I think just need a couple of minutes for some items of interest. Probably not committee reports unless they're very urgent because I do not want to eat into the time for this conversation, but I have an item. Betty, do you have something that you wanted to do? Why don't you go ahead?
Okay. These are both urgent, I think. The billboards, 18th and Willamette, a number of people have asked me about that. They thought they were illegal and for a while there was a sign up saying rent this space and now someone has rented it. But I want to know what kind of answer to give people who are asking me and whether we can do anything about it. I think it's illegal. But anyway, and then the big thing that I think is really urgent is the council should take a stand on House Bill 2001, which is the one that would preempt our ability to handle zoning in the city.
I second that.
And I think it's important that we do it and do it quickly. The IGR committee's meeting after this meeting and anybody can come and join us if you want to, if you feel like sitting a while longer, but I hope we can find time at council to vote on that soon.
Is that a motion to oppose?
Yeah, to oppose, of course. I think we should, could I make a motion now?
No. I think it needs to go through the IGR committee first and since I know the IGR committee is divided on this issue, it will come to council, I assure you.
It should come to council and it should be soon.
And yes, the time is wasting. It's a legislative session, so you'll come back, you'll have a chance. And anybody's invited to sit on the IGR. Yes. Did you have, yes?
In response to Betty's, I had the same complaints and I went and looked at the sign and also his staff responded that said basically the way that the interpretation of the sign code is, is those are legal billboards and it would take probably a change to our sign code. So I was thinking of adding it and voting yes on Counselor Pryor's Sign Code Work Session. We can combine those two items together.
It's state regulated, not city.
Actually, within the city, we can regulate that stuff. So it's a matter of how big it is and what the size is. I think putting those things up and having not the local business, the approximate business, but anybody's advertising on all these signs around the city is not what the sign code's for.
Okay. Emily?
Thank you. Unfortunately, I made my list for the last meeting when I thought we were going to have items, but there are a few things that I've asked for improvements and we've gotten them. One is that we've gotten the packet material a week earlier than we used to and it's been immensely helpful. And I asked for better minutes and we also have better minutes with the comments attributed to the person that said them. And I had a third one, but I don't have my notes. And of course, I still really need a downtown center and a place for people to sleep. They're doing it anyway. It's been three months and I just really would like to see some things happening. And once again, I'm going to make my universal plea to every single person who lives here. Please help us find some sites for car camping. It's the easiest for rest stops and for dawn to dawns. Our pilot projects have worked and our biggest stumbling blocks are locations. So please, once again, as you drive around Eugene, be alert for places you think that might work. And if there's a place you think that might work, except for one or two circumstances that might be changed, please let us know. This is the essential part of our homeless crisis is location, location, location. Thanks.
Okay. Anybody else with items? So I just have a quick one. We have received a request from the YMCA for, and offering our support for their request for lottery funds from the legislature this year. So similar to what we did last year as a council in supporting the Civic Stadium. So I'm planning to bring that back to you in a week or so and I just wanted to, I'm hoping next week, looking at the calendar. So I just wanted to give you a heads up that I will come and if you have questions about that, I'm happy to share what I know about the why and that process. So with that, let us proceed with community safety.
Mayor, Council, I'm Kristi Hammett, Assistant City Manager. I'm joined at the table today by Kevin Alltucker. Kevin's been carrying the load as our project manager over the course of these past several months and just been phenomenal to work with. Also joined at the table by Chief Skinner and Chief Salutic. You're fabulous too. And then also just wanted to point out that we have Twyla Miller and Mauricio.
Batelico.
Batelico. Yeah, I knew I was going to chop that up. So, and I can't say enough about the work that our finance team has done in working with the Revenue Committee and also just the work that they've been doing to research. And I also want to give a quick shout out to the city attorney's office because there's been a lot of work that they've been doing along this realm and preparing for these discussions. So today, we're here, as you know, to talk about a topic very near and dear and familiar to you, which is the community safety system. Over the course of the past several years, you have been unwavering in your commitment to address critical system challenges and have remained focused on long-term system stabilization and support the safety and well-being of our community. You set the tone for this work early on in 2018. Council, you had a goal session last February where you identified public safety as an area of focus. At that session, you identified a system of system outcomes that you wanted to achieve and one of which was to have a long-term plan for the system stability and growth to meet the community needs. The four work sessions, would you mind shifting to that second slide, please? Thanks. This is kind of the path that we've been on. And so the four work sessions that were held on this topic in 2018, the fourth work session was in September. Staff presented a balanced approach and a comprehensive plan to transform and stabilize the current system and an immediate course of action to begin addressing the gaps. At that meeting, you took swift action to approved an $8.6 million, 18-month bridge strategy and directed staff to begin working with a revenue team to develop a long-term funding proposal to address the growing critical community safety needs. You will receive an update today on the bridge strategy and hear a recurring theme about the momentum that that $8.6 million investment has generated in the work that's being done. The bridge strategy, just to remind you, expires on June 30th of 2020, which is just next June and it will come very fast. Throughout this entire process, you have taken incremental steps supporting the system gaps with one-time strategies since fiscal year 15. The incremental approach has given us time to assess the system challenges, to find ways to make the system work more efficiently together, to engage with community members about their experiences and needs, and to develop a system-wide plan grounded in industry best practice. The iterative implementation path has worked well and is a path that will continue to serve us well as we look for the long-term funding solution. We've heard from the community. You might remember that Dr. Manross provided a presentation to you last June. And what he shared in his statistically valid survey that he completed was that 40% of the people that were surveyed identified homelessness as one of the critical issues that was front of mind for people in working to solve. 70% of this, and he said, found that 70% of the city should place a high priority on programs such as community court, community outreach team, mental health court, teen court, and cahoots. 84% of the respondents agreed that the city officials should take steps to address the impact of the safety challenges. And 58% of the respondents definitely support or probably support the city council enacting a modest annual fee to address the problem without going to the ballot. We've completed online surveys. We took the Manross survey. We added some qualitative questions to that. We received 2,500 responses. And you might recall that when we spoke with you in September, we integrated, what was really interesting about the survey and the data that we received is that it really aligned with the statistically valid survey that was completed by Dr. Manross. And the themes were consistent in terms of the priorities. In addition, you might remember that our chiefs and our judge and other staff spent a significant amount of time having face-to-face conversations and working closely with the community to help not only talk about what we perceive to be the problem, but really listening to what their needs are and what they're experiencing in the community. So today, you'll receive an update on the implementation of that bridge funding and also an update on the revenue team report that was sent to the city manager. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, Kevin, or to Chief Skinner.
Thank you, Kristi. And just for the record, both Chiefs, Salutic and I do feel fabulous today. So we're happy to be here. Important day for all of us as we continue to move forward what we believe to be one of the most critical initiatives that we've seen in our careers as we try to build a safer Eugene for everyone, both residents and visitors alike. The next couple of slides will be slides that you have seen before in a way of just kind of refreshing our memory about how we've gotten to the plan, the public safety plan that will, is what informed the revenue team on how to stabilize and raise money for that. And through this entire process, as you can imagine, we've been focused on outcomes. We've been focused on what is it we're trying to accomplish and what outcomes can we achieve? We've been acutely aware that people have a tendency to align themselves more with the types of results they can see as a result of increasing capacity in the system. And so the outcomes have informed us greatly and we've kind of landed on three separate areas for our outcomes, and that's prevent, respond, and resolve. And there's a variety of different services in each one of those categories. And so we're going to talk a little bit about that today and we're going to talk a little bit about what we've been able to accomplish as a result of the bridge funding. The first approach we often take is to take a look at the system and the system as a whole and especially in the criminal justice system. It's unlikely that if you add, for instance, police officers, that there's not going to be stresses to the other parts of the system. There'll be stresses in the jails, stress in the prosecutor's office, stresses in municipal court. And so when we tried to look at this, we tried to take a holistic approach and say, if we're trying to achieve a certain outcome from a system perspective, by adding capacity in one area, what does that do to the other area? And so we've been very thoughtful about making sure that we build something that addresses the system's approach to that. But we've also recognized that by oftentimes when we add capacity in another area, for instance, in our homeless services, that it also creates less of a burden and creates more capacity in other areas. For instance, in the police world, and you've often heard me say this, if I have places for people to sleep safely, then that's less officers that need to respond to those complaints about people that are sleeping in unsafe places. And so it goes both ways when we talk about building a system that is very much interdependent and can help each other out. And so that systems approach has been the cornerstone of what we've been trying to accomplish.
Yeah, I'm going to talk about our partnerships. And I just want to take a few minutes to kind of demonstrate how wonderful our partnerships are. And I didn't realize, I always knew this, but it took a few events, one over the last few weeks. I was at Chief Skinner's shop, meeting with the Portland Police Bureau with cahoots. And they were looking at the system that we've had in place for almost 30 years. And you know, they're amazed and they're trying to figure out how they can duplicate that. Very next week, I was at a conference for homelessness for fire chiefs on the West Coast. We're talking from Phoenix and San Diego to Vancouver, British Columbia and Seattle. And nobody on the West Coast has anything like cahoots in place, let alone for the last 30 years. And that's the difference in this community is for 30 years, we've treated everybody with dignity. Right? So that's the partnership that we're going to build on. And that's why this is going to work and our trajectory is going to be different than the trajectories of other large cities that have not had success because they don't have the base of community support to build on. Another major partnership that makes us very different is our commitment to kids and our commitments to education. If you look at our LRCS team and what they do with youth engagement and the focus on early literacy, this is how we stem the flow into the system. And this is why we're going to have these partnerships that build to the point where this is going to change how our community looks and feels and how we get people out of an environment that is unhealthy and unsafe. I would like to talk about the mental health court and the community courts. They're not really directly together, but those two things, we get to participate in them as in a support role and to see the outcomes of people genuinely having something to give back to the community as a part of that experience, I think is the key to investing them in the community that they're in. And so people ask me, how does this affect, you know, fire response or EMS response? And it affects it tremendously because we're adding low acuity, basic life support, which improves our response reliability for our highest, most critical calls. Every day, we run low and sometimes out of ambulances that we have to shift. And having these basic life support units on the street allows us to upstaff them with a paramedic to turn them into an ALS unit in the event that somebody needs higher care. And so having this capacity has definitely improved our ability to respond and it's going to allow us to keep pace with the growth of this community by trying to get some of the low acuity calls that can be managed in different ways out of the system. Another way we're going to do that in the relative near future is a community response unit that looks like a triage car where somebody gets a call for service and if they know it's a call for cahoots, they send cahoots out. If they think it's a call for service for fire, but it doesn't sound like it's high acuity, right now, we send a large fire truck or a fire engine and an ambulance to evaluate what the patient's needs are. We know that we can do that much more efficiently and determine if they're advanced life support or basic life support. And part of this program is going to allow us to do a pilot on that and determine how our protocols might work to reduce some of those low acuity calls for service. And at the end of this cycle, we will also have the opportunity to pilot either a nurse triage in the 911 center that allow us to listen to patients' needs and direct them directly to their medical care group rather than take them to an urgent care or the emergency room where it is not necessarily the definitive care that they need for something that is not rising to the occasion of needing direct medical intervention in that same hour. More stable funding. Remind me what I was going to say about that, Chris. We talked about this in the rep room.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think that, I think we talked a little bit about, Joe talks a lot about response and response is important because that, you know, as the needs arise, there needs to be a response. But I think with the commitment, both in Joe's areas of influence and my area of influence is making sure that we match the type of response with the need. It makes no sense for you to hire a bucket load more police officers and then have them go do things that police officers shouldn't necessarily be doing. That's why we have the CSO program, for instance. We're trying to match the response with the need. And part of what we've built with this bridge funding and with this community safety plan is looking at all areas of trying to create capacity in that that matches the response with the need. Another great example of that is our partnership with cahoots again, is that law enforcement, your law enforcement professionals shouldn't necessarily be your behavioral health first responders. We should be asking our partners and strength through strength and partnerships to be our behavioral health first responders. We've got a unique model here. We've made a financial commitment to that. Cahoots responded to right around 17,000 calls for service last year. Many of those are through our dispatch center, if not all of them, and many of those would land on the police's lap to respond to, of which you know we can't respond to right now. And so that's a great example of how we try to match the response to the need and along with the BLS that Joe was talking about. And so as we've, we've taken a look at what we've done with the bridge funding with the eight and a half million dollars, I think part of what we were tasked with doing, what council tasked us to do, is how do we stabilize this? How do we move to stabilize funding? How do we identify not only stabilizing the eight and a half million, 8.6 million that we had and supplemental budget one, but also how do we build a system with stable funding into the future and what does that look like?
And that does remind me, we were, you know, we have funding until June 30th of next year. We know these pilot elements are starting to work. We can see which ones are really getting traction and apply the resources in the areas that we know are producing tremendously positive results. On the prevent, the youth prevention services are key. And it wasn't until a few years ago that I realized Renee Grube and I have a lot in common when it comes to early child literacy because that ties into a lot of community safety. It ties into well-being of people's health and how people, what people get injured in accidents and in other events. And we know that it's key to eliminating the flow and reducing the calls for service in the future have a lot to do with education and having that youth engagement where somebody is out in the neighborhood or at the parks, getting the youth to do things that are positive behaviors and learn positive behaviors are what's going to stem the flow into the future. We talked about community court and homeless services, but some of the things that we've done, we've posted a recreation position to facilitate position by youth with mental health needs. This is a tremendous challenge because without having that support, it limits who can participate into these activities. And for the safety of the individual, the individuals that are putting on the course and everybody in the class, it's important to have that so we can be inclusive of all people that want to participate in these activities. One of the best things that I think has gone on is the 15th night through March of 2020. 15th night gets people off the streets, young people, before they've been out there more than two weeks, where they have less chance of going away from being homeless. And that's important to pour those resources into those known entities that we can turn from being homeless and their homelessness. We purchased some Conestoga huts, three of them, for the Nightingale Shelters on Hilliard. And we also have a third case manager for the community-supported shelters that helps move people from rest stops to housing. That's helping. And the Lynnholm Center received funding that allows them to stay open on weekends and expanding the car camping. And again, the investment in early literacy and youth engagement programming.
In our response section, you see that there's a lot that has to do with things we're trying to accomplish in the police department. The rapid response team was a strategy that I talked to council about, for lack of a better term, Street Crimes Unit or Community Response Team, a CRT. And we talked about being able to do that. I'm happy to report that the first phase of that, which will be a sergeant and a AIC lieutenant and four officers will be deployed on March 5th. As staff becomes available, fully built out, that is going to be two sergeants and eight officers that will be able to be dynamic and nimble around the city, handling problems in the areas. I could see this being widely used and effective in our West University District that seems to be in crisis in Whittaker that we continue to have challenges with. Up and along our bike paths along the Willamette River are really, really important to us in the type of behaviors we're seeing. This is the type of team that's not tied to the radio and calls for service, but actually can come up with a strategic plan on how we solve certain problems in our community. Community services officers was another piece of the bridge funding and we all know the value of that. Our 911 dispatchers that oftentimes get overlooked, but are working so hard to try and answer all those non-emergency and emergency calls for service and then trying to bridge the gap between the ambulance transport. What we've been able to accomplish is we've selected a AIC lieutenant for street crimes to stand that up. We are selecting the sergeant next week. We have memos of interest that are open through this week for officers and we'll be selecting that team. And we've hired four out of the five CSOs to date. The fifth one is in background. Of those CSOs, two of them are solo, two of them are in training, and then we'll hire the fifth. So we're dangerously close to having doubled the amount of CSOs we have in the first couple of months that we've been here. We are hiring 911 positions, those three and a half positions that were added. I have six in background right now and are pending a start date. And Joe is getting ready in February to hire 10 fire BLS techs. They've been very, very successful and been able to actually hire 21 of those individuals over the last two years. And so that's, that's been great.
A quick comment on that. This, our apprentice level, basic life support techs, after a few semesters at LCC, we can engage them in apprentice work and many of those go on to come into the fire service. And for the first time in memory, our hiring is starting to reflect and look more like the demographic of our high school population than it ever has in the past. And we have a long ways to go, but we know we're taking strides in the right direction with this program.
In the resolve section, we have some increased municipal court capacity. We talked about as we add the ability to do more with our police department. We do need to add capacity in the municipal court and five additional jail beds. Those five additional jail beds were kind of ready waiting for us if we just identified the funding for that. So I'm happy to report that that's happening. We're hiring one new city prosecutor, but through this bridge funding, we've been able to stabilize two limited duration employees that we currently have. And so that stabilization is really important for us. Hired one court clerk so far and we've maintained the funds for the beds and increased the five beds. And we began a really strong partnership with Springfield, that, a diversion to Springfield in lieu of custody at the Lane County Jail, that is starting to see some benefits of reducing our capacity-based releases that are occurring on the weekends. So that's a really strong partnership that we're really excited about and hopefully will be ongoing.
Okay, the plan. And we've gone over this, but this shows it in a graph form. We're going to, community court expansion, expansion of the mental health court, enhanced day resource center, enhanced dusk to dawn, enhance the rest stop program, after-school programs at Title I schools, starting with, I think, the initial four and then seven for a total of 11. It's very important. And if you look at the list of things that we're doing that are positive, this is what makes us different than other communities. We don't just try one solution and see what happens. We have a very multi-disciplined approach, knowing that when something gains traction, we're going to apply the resources and refine that program. It's working, starting, we're starting to see improvements in a lot of levels. We have the nurse triage program down there to reduce calls for service and then that community response unit that will triage out in the field after the call comes in.
So as you see, it's, this is a long list and I'm not going to necessarily go through each one of these for you, but it's not an exhaustive list of what's in the $22.5 million we're proposing. But it's a lot of FTEs and I admittedly EPD is the lion's share of the FTEs. I believe we're of the 126, EPD is the beneficiary of 87 and a half. And so it has not fallen, fallen on me is that this is an insignificant lift for EPD to be able to spin something up if we're able to be successful for stabilized funding. The good news though, when we think about halving, needing to hire this many officers to start creating capacity and start moving the trends in the right direction, whether it's response time, number of calls for service, discretionary time in an officer's day, this is going to be a heavy lift for us. The good news is, is that we are in an unprecedented, at least, at least in the nine months I've been here. It feels like we're in an unprecedented time, unprecedented time of enthusiasm and encouragement around recruitment, retention and hiring of officers. And let me just throw some numbers at you. Right now, I'm down one person, one FTE on my general fund positions. I'm not sure the last time your police department was only down one. I'm in background right now for a deputy chief to solidify my senior staff, I think, which is going to be really, really important. We are in background with 35 police officer candidates right now. We hired last year. We hired, last year, we hired 27 officers since January of 18 in the last eight months, or in that first eight months from January 18, we hired 27 officers. We were able to do that. And a total of 32 over the, over the course of the year. We're on pace to hire over 40 officers this year with what's going on. I challenged this police department to get their hiring practices down from nine months to, from six months to 90 days. They've done that. The only piece of that process that we are not acquiescing on or we're compromising on is the background process, which is super important, super important and continues to be fully vetting those, those candidates. So I'm really excited when you think about 35 candidates in background, we are working really, really hard to get police officers on board and to be able to do that. And so we're hoping to do that. I'm expected to be fully staffed to include the 10 officers you allocated in your bridge funding for this PD on April 22nd. I mean, that is amazing to be there now. Having said that, we are also the only agency that DPSST, which is our certification academy that's calling to ask us, how many are you hiring so we know how many classes to have? They don't call the bureau. They call EPD right now. We've got 12 in the academy right now. I'm expecting this spring to put as many as 16 in the academy. And we're forecasting five departures between now and June 1st. And so my plan is to over-hire with year-end money and be ready to absorb the departure of those five hardworking officers and an immediate replacement with officers so that we can keep, continue to keep this momentum moving. The only way we get to yes on this plan from an EPD perspective is if we keep this momentum going and this enthusiasm going around wanting to be a part of this organization. And so we're really, really pleased to report that we felt like we've, we've been able to accomplish that right now. We're in a really, really good spot to be able to act and take advantage of this moment in time around hiring.
Thank you, Mayor Venice and members of the council for this opportunity. My goal in the next 15-ish minutes or so is to describe to you the process that the revenue team completed in identifying a payroll tax as a method to fund community safety in our city. So I have five goals. Let's see how I do, okay? The first one, I'm going to tell you about the, the process. The second, I'm going to give you details about that process and why the payroll tax bubbled up to the top of the list. I'm going to describe some conceptual mechanics of how a payroll tax might work. So these are very conceptual models that you can use to think about how to put maybe a payroll tax together. I will talk about possible effects in terms of how much is going to come out of my pocket. And then finally, I'm going to end up with, all right, what are we buying with those payroll tax dollars? So what are we getting for our money? That's my goal, all right? So the revenue team and many of them are in attendance here today. So I'd like to give a shout out and a recognition. So councilors Pryor, Simple and Yay participated in the revenue team committee along with John Borowski, Laura Illig, Eliza Kaczynski, Scott Nowicki and Bill Wayland. So those are names that are known to many of you as folks who understand revenue and finance and the mechanisms of such. The committee met four times, beginning in November and ending on February 1st. Their task was clear. Identify a package of revenue options that will fund 22.8 million dollars. That was their task. And in doing so, they examined a lot of options and there are some listed on the slide there for you, but we couldn't cram all 24 on there. So there were many considered, things like a commuter tax, an e-cigarette tax, a paper bag fee, a personal income tax, a red light camera, rest of my, right? So these are familiar options. The other thing that the committee considered was a levy, right? Can we go out for a levy for a portion or all of the 22.8 million? The committee used six criteria to prioritize the 24 options. The first criteria was revenue raising capacity. Does the revenue option have the ability to raise most or all of the 22.8 million dollars? The second criteria was the administrative effort included in collecting that particular revenue. The third criteria was the revenue stability and reliability. That is, is the revenue going to be constant, fairly stable over time? Will it grow with the needs of our community as our needs grow? They looked at triple bottom line, which many of you know have to do with social equity, environmental impact and impacts on prosperity, specifically businesses, right? So that was one of the lenses that were, that were used. They looked at the connection or the nexus to community safety. So for example, does a paper bag fee have a direct connection to community safety? Probably not so much. And then finally, the fairness of a revenue stream and the political feasibility of that revenue stream. And I'll talk more about that. So again, they looked at 25 options using those six criteria and most options came off the list fairly rapidly for reasons having to do with yield. Some of those revenue options just did not have the capacity to raise anywhere near the 22.8 million dollars. And so the committee felt pretty strongly that it would be important to make a recommendation to the city manager of a simple funding package, as simple as possible. And so instead of five or six different funding options, it would be better to have one or two. So that was an, kind of an overlaying philosophy that they used. So they quickly narrowed the list to three options and, and then they took another crack at them. And they took a closer look at those three options and those three options were the utility consumption fee, the public safety fee and the payroll tax. And the payroll tax came out as the number one choice, the number one recommendation because it has the ability to raise the funds required to meet our community's needs. The other thing about the payroll tax, which is interesting, is that it's not a new concept. We have other payroll taxes in our lives. LTD is one example. If you live in the Portland area, the Trimate Transportation Payroll Tax and recently the State Transit Tax, which is a payroll tax, started on July 1st. So the concept is not new. What's new is applying that to community safety here in Eugene. We also looked at the administrative efforts that are required to collect a payroll tax. And I'll tell you that preliminary discussions with the State Department of Revenue, DOR, indicate that DOR can have, has the legal ability to collect the payroll tax. So these conversations are preliminary, but positive. I'll couch them as that. The payroll tax would supply a stable and reliable revenue stream for community safety. The Eugene payroll is a fairly stable entity. It is in fact growing. It has grown, you know, a couple, two, three, four percentage points over the past decade, even just shortly after the Great Recession. It's, it's grown. The other thing to, to consider in this is that other municipalities are considering payroll tax. For example, City of Salem is considering a payroll tax to fund some of their budget needs. The payroll tax addresses a triple bottom line and not perfectly. And again, the payroll tax option, the committee realized that this is not a perfect solution, but it did meet most of the criteria. So when we look at the triple bottom line, the first thing is social equity, right? So how are people going to be affected by a payroll tax? Payroll tax works, the more you earn, the more you pay, right? So in that sense, it has a progressive bent to it. Lower income folks will have a higher percentage of their income being taxed. So in that light, it has a bit of a regressive flavor to it. The environmental impacts were nil. There was no, the committee said there were no potential impacts to the environment. Well, the next one is about the impacts to business prosperity. And that's where there were interesting discussions, right? So how would a payroll tax, for example, levied on employers affect businesses in our So that was, it was considered. Finally, we looked at whether there was a connection between a payroll tax and community safety, right? And the nexus is people who live and work here, any one of us in this room could be potential consumers of our community safety services, right? And we have two of the chiefs with us today. So any one of us could be consumers. So in that light, there was a pretty clear connection. The fairness and political feasibility, I've already covered some of the fairness. The political feasibility is an ongoing conversation. Who wants to pay more taxes, right? No one wants to pay more taxes. So the conversation in the revenue committee was, well, that's really not the question. The question is what value would be gained by a payroll tax? What am I getting for my payroll tax dollar? And the conversations centered around values of livability. How many of us have heard businesses in the downtown area say, I am fed up. I, I'm losing customers because they don't want to come downtown, right? So that there's some benefits in livability to this payroll tax. I'd like to talk about some high-level possibilities here. So if you think of a payroll tax, you can break it into two groups. And these two groups kind of operate as separate taxes. So you can have a tax on employers, you can have a tax on employees, right? Or you can have some combination of those two. And the committee used the term hybrid to describe that model. And that was their recommendation, is to explore some sort of hybrid model. Again, the payroll tax is not a new concept. We all know how it works. We know how the mechanisms work. Of course, it is new for Eugene. When you start to think about all the infinite possibilities of those combinations, they kind of break into three large groups. So the committee wanted to describe models, conceptual models that could be used for discussion. So one of those models is, okay, you have a hybrid. So you have a group of employers, you have a group of employees and they each pay an equal tax rate. So that's number one, equal tax rates for employers and employees. The second model, you could have a fixed employer tax rate and a variable tax rate for employees. Now, the combination of all of these are intended to add up to that 22.8 million dollars, right? The third model up there is a fixed employee tax rate and a variable employer tax rate. The 22.8 million dollars is the target. And when we look at how to phase that in possibly, we look at a six-year phase in. Why a six-year phase in? Well, for example, and Chief Skinner alluded to this, even though he's doing a great job of hiring new police officers, it takes time. So in this model, we're aiming for 40 additional police officers. Well, we can't hire 40 police officers in the first year. And so that's one example of why we would want to, or suggest to phase in that payroll tax over a period of years. And the committee looked at phasing in over six years. I mentioned the Department of Revenue, DOR, and that DOR is kind of a logical entity to collect the payroll tax and that the conversations around whether that's a possibility are positive and ongoing and not certain at this point, right? The revenue team committee felt strongly about that if DOR were for some reason not able to, chose not to, City of Eugene chose not to enter into an agreement with DOR, that this payroll tax model was so important that the committee suggested that the city collect the payroll tax. Now, I add that for emphasis because it's important so that you understand the, the strong conviction of the revenue team. Even though DOR may not be able to, for whatever reason, collect the tax, they suggest that this plan move forward. Here's another conceptual model that gets to, all right, what are the potential impacts? How much money are we talking about? What's coming out of my pocket, right? So these are very kind of theoretical 30,000-foot conceptual models that are designed to help frame a conversation. On the left, you have an employer. Now this is, let's say it's an average employer, let's say they have $500,000 of gross payroll per year, okay? If you looked at a payroll tax rate of 0.2%, the cost to that employer would be $85 a If you looked at a payroll tax rate of 0.3%, the cost to that employer with $500,000 gross payroll per year would be $125 a month. So we, we put this up here as kind of a place to scale up or down. So I know employers right now are saying, okay, my payroll is actually less than that. So, you know, the cost is going to be less or my payroll is more than that, and so my cost is going to be more. On the right-hand side, we have an impact to employees. And we chose to show you, all right, $20 an hour. What's coming out of my pocket if I make $20 an hour? Well, at a 0.2 payroll tax rate, that equates to about $7 a month. At a 0.3% payroll tax rate, that's about $10 a month. Now, it's worth mentioning and recognizing that not everyone makes $20 an hour. So there are lower income folks in our community. So if we look at a minimum wage, $12 an hour, that person is going to be paying about $4 a month in payroll taxes under that 0.2% payroll tax rate and about $6 a month with that 0.3% payroll tax rate. And how appropriate that we're hearing sounds of our community safety system right now. So the idea is that we want to show the impacts to businesses and the impacts to people, which are not insignificant. Now, some of you may be looking at these numbers and thinking, wow, these, this is higher than I thought. thought." And some of you might be thinking, "This is lower than I thought." Well, that'll be an interesting conversation as we move forward. I'm going to like to circle back as I conclude my comments. All right, what am I getting for my money here? What am I paying for? Well, here's a dollar bill. So, for every dollar, 65 cents would go to Eugene Police Department, right? And you heard Chief Skinner talk about the improvements that he's aiming for, the outcomes that he's aiming for. Lower response time, better response to calls, more efficient use of police resources. All right, 10 cents are going to fire and EMS. And you heard Chief Zaludic speak to the efficiencies about matching response to needs. 15 cents goes to Muni Court. And I just have to make a pitch. I visited community court in the fall as part of my work here. I wanted to see what that was all about. And as a human services professional, I was very impressed because in one side you have the courtroom, and 10 feet away, you have social services available to help people, to keep them from cycling in and out of the court system. 7 cents for every payroll tax dollar would go to homelessness outreach services. And 3 cents of every dollar would go into youth prevention services that Chief Zaludic has mentioned. So, part of this conversation, of course, is logical. The scope of the problem, the size of the problem, the mechanics of how to raise money to solve that problem, to meet those needs, those are all logical components. And obviously, the discussion has an emotional part as well, has to do with values. Not only value of what am I getting for my dollar, but what do we value as a community around protecting people and keeping people safe and having a healthy community. If these changes were to go forward, they affect me, too. I'm not an out-of-town consultant. I live here. I raised a family here. So, it's about value as well as logic. Does our community value this? Does our community value a healthy community? Does our community value moving ahead with funding our public safety and community safety needs? I think the answer is yes. Thank you.
All right. So, Mayor, just a quick comment. So, as you just heard from Kevin, the report that was provided to John was thorough and thoughtful in considering not only what the revenue net would be, but also the impacts to community. It was one of the best committees, and the work that they did was really outstanding. We believe this is a viable option for strong consideration and moving forward. And our next steps would, first of all, we're really excited to hear your input and what you're thinking along these lines. But our next steps would be to prepare to come back with another work session and more details to continue this discussion.
Okay, thank you. So, my plan has been, hold on, I'll form a queue here. I've got Mike, I've got Alan, I've got Claire and Greg, but I and Betty. My plan has been to have the three councilors who served on the committee speak to this first, and it looks like Emily is first on that. Mike, are you needing to leave?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So, we'll take you out of the queue. Okay, so, Emily, then, who wants to go next? Emily, then Jennifer, then Chris. Okay, take it away.
Wow, thank you. That was one of the greatest presentations I've heard yet at council. It was so clear, it was so comprehensive, and it was so accurate for what happened. So, thank you so much and to the community. This is really a very good summary of what happened. I'm really proud to be on this committee. It was a good selection of people, there was balance. We did not all agree, which to me makes it a good discussion and a better conclusion. But we did reach consensus on this. This is a critical need, as we've been talking about for years and years. We're so understaffed, and our homeless situation is out of control. And at the same time, the rest of the population isn't served enough. I think this is the best choice. You heard what we went through, and I really am supportive of this. It's one tax, it's not a cobbled-together selection. It will grow as our needs grow with more officers and more outreach. It's the least regressive, and that's really important to me, that it's as fair as we can be. And it's not a property tax. I think we've had it with bonds and levies, and there's two more coming. So, we didn't want to get into the property tax game. And we didn't want to do a community fee because it's not really fair. The poor people will be paying such a higher percentage. This doesn't include everyone in our population, but it turns out it's kind of impossible to do that, especially not being super regressive. It will grow as our needs grow, and the burden is pretty fair to everybody. I do have a couple of questions. I think you mentioned that the lower-income people would pay a higher percentage. Isn't the percentage all the way the same?
The percentage would be the same, it would just be the percentage of their income would be.
I don't understand that. If everybody's paying 2% of their income, why is it a bigger percent of mine than yours?
It's not. But, you know, it's a wonky tax discussion that, it's just that this type of tax has a lot of progressive features to it. As you mentioned, it's not 100% progressive.
And then, what percentage will get us to our goal? You know, my initial reaction is to go to 0.25. And with the scenarios of being equal or one or the other being variable, why wouldn't they both be variable? What's the advantage to those three choices? And then also, if they would vary, how would they vary? Would they be varying until that six-year limit when we'd be stable? So, I'd like a little more information about that variability and the three choices.
That's exactly the kind of information that we feel would be a course of a next conversation in moving this forward. Because there's a variety of ways, and in the report, it captures some different strategies about how you could ramp up over two-year increments. But there's a variety of ways that that could be accomplished by dialing up or dialing down, as Kevin talked about, the different levers that would be available with the system. And so, I could provide you some numbers today, or we can share those later, so.
Okay. Well, I'm certainly hoping that we will come back to this. I encourage my colleagues to consider this. Nobody likes taxes. We really need increased public safety and homeless efforts. Thank you to everyone, the whole committee and the staff, for your excellent work.
Jennifer?
Thank you. So, first of all, like Emily said, thank you so much to everyone who is on the committee. It was a great committee, and I wish Kevin could summarize all meetings that I go to from now on. Because I really don't know what there is for Emily and Chris and I to say. He's really covered it all. For me, what was really important was that it was a solution that brought us consistent, reliable, and adequate funds, and that the tax was easy to explain. I wanted to have something that I could explain to my teenagers, and they would get it. Because if I have to spend a half an hour, people are going to start getting confused, and then they're going to start to mistrust the system. And I think having a very easy tax that makes sense to people was really important. And the committee really looked at, you know, how this is going to work, and is it going to be really what meets our needs? And I think we found that. I would just encourage all the other councilors, if after this you guys have questions, I know Emily and Chris and I are more than happy to talk to people and to go through it. But I think Kevin did an excellent job, so.
Chris?
Yeah, thank you. Tremendous presentation, and I think showing what you're getting for the money, I think, is a significant piece of it. I think that's great. And I particularly am impressed with the notion of the Flying Squad. I think that's a great idea. And I think it really allows you the flexibility that you need. I've been here before. I've been in the process of saying, "We've got a heavy lift. Where are we going to find the money to do it?" And sometimes, you feel good about the outcome of that meeting, and you can actually get some stuff done, as we did. Alan remembers on the Transportation Committee when we came up with some solutions that really impacted our transportation infrastructure. Other times, you'll do it, and you'll talk about it, and you'll study it, and you'll come back and make a recommendation, and nothing ever happens from there. And I think this group, as the others pointed out, I felt good coming into the meeting because I felt there was a real commitment to actually act rather than to continue to talk. And I think that's where we really mark this process. There is a commitment to act. When we first provided the bridge funding, it was on the expectation that we would come back together to say, "How can we stabilize and sustain this money?" We're not just going to give the 8.6 and then walk away and say, "We've solved the problem." And then, when it runs out, it runs out. We've got to make it sustainable. We've got to keep the momentum going, because the momentum is already demonstrating success, and we can't stop that. So, what kind of financial revenue solutions can really sustain that heavy lift? Because that's a significant amount of money, it really is. And yeah, you pointed out, we looked at a lot of options, and none of them were really going to get us there, particularly if we didn't want to put something very complicated and very technical together. There is no tax that everybody's going to like. And I'm fully prepared for people to be very upset about us even asking for more money. And I wouldn't consider asking for more money, particularly this way, if it weren't for something as compelling and as emergent as community safety. I'm not talking about planting more trees or doing some other kind of thing. That's great. It's a good to do, but it's not an essential core thing to do. This is completely different. In this discussion, you absolutely positively have to be committed to the community in order to promote its safety and security. That's why I'm willing to back wholeheartedly this kind of a solution, because it's what we're going to need if we're going to really meet that goal. So, I'm prepared to walk the talk, because it's very simple to talk about this and talk about this and talk about this. But at some point, we have to say we're committed to it. And I know that when you commit to something and when you're prepared to take action, that's where you make enemies. But I'm prepared to live with that, because we need to do this. And I'm prepared to take those steps in order to make this community more safe and secure. So, thank you. Thank you for helping us get through this process.
Alan?
Thanks, Mayor. I liked the first half of what you guys have done and the work that you've all done to accomplish a plan. And I like the plan. I think it's the right things to bring on board in the appropriate portions. And they're long overdue. And I thank the committee for the work that they've done. But I do not like small-group recommendations. I never have, for which I have no input. And I'm not a rubber stamp. I need to do my own analysis. This approach has failed many times, numerous times. Case in point, Affordable Housing Tools Group that came to us with a proposal. Transportation funding revenue failed because of that. There's many others. I need to do my own bottom-up analysis on all of the options and come to a conclusion. And I hope the rest of the council needs to do that themselves. So, that means basically starting over. It may, I may get to the same conclusion that the group did and the recommendation, but I need ample time to get the info, do the analysis, and go through that process. The committee's recommendation is one input in my decision-making of many that we'll go through. So, I guess the question to the folks that were on, to the mayor and the city manager, what's the process to accomplish this for council? What's the next steps that allows us, the rest of the council, to go through the process that the committee did to get to a conclusion?
Yeah, I think from my perspective, we're in the listening mode at the moment. And then, based on all of that, we will sort of think about what are the next steps. So, we're, at the moment, trying to listen to all of the voices at the table.
My suggestion is that we do go back and look at all the stuff that the committee did. My problem with the small committee groups is that it ends up, you redo all the work. And, you know, sometimes that's a good thing to do, because you've, it's an easier thing to do, because you've got all the information organized, and we can readily access it. And we've already gone through it, so we know how to process it. So, my suggestion is we go through a process of walking through all those different options and figuring out that stuff. Specifically on the proposal, the Achilles' heel of a proposal would be a flat tax. And this was, when we proposed the service fee, even though it was a flat rate, it was perceived, and it was so easy to pick at, and was, I think, one of the fundamental problems with it, was that it was flat, and it was perceived as regressive. So, what happened to the fourth option of the conceptual models, where both of the options were variable, where you had an employee rate based on income level and employer rate based on size of either gross revenue or number of employees? That would be one that I would add as well.
Yeah, so that's, any of those variations are possible, for sure. You can make them both variable as well, as both fixed, or one or the other is variable and fixed.
Okay, Claire?
Thank you. Since you're in listening mode, here are my thoughts. So, thank you. I really appreciate the work of the committee and the councilors who served on that committee, and the thoughtful framing today of how this new revenue would serve to address many of the identified gaps in our community safety system. You know, I was thinking back over the years and our budget deliberations. And at some point, actually, maybe in our follow-up session or sessions, I would like to know how this plan for the 126 FTE compares to the cuts that we made when we had the recession, you know, 2008, when we dramatically had to shrink city services in the face of that recession. That resulted in reduced services and the gaps in what we have from what our community expects from our public safety system versus what we are able to deliver. And we've essentially had, in some cases, a flat budget for many of those, other than, you know, having to increase payroll to deal with, you know, the union contracts and materials and services costs increases. But we weren't able to bring that system back up to a more robust level. We redesigned a number of programs. I remember specifically our animal services delivery. And, you know, shed, I believe, my memory is correct, about a quarter of our city FTE from that time. So, I think a lot of people don't remember that. And our city revenues have risen since then, but not to the point where we can provide those services that our city expects and needs. And that's why we've turned recently to the levy for the library and the bond and levy measures for our park and rec programs. So, we were able to find that bridge funding, you know, for one-time funding. But this current conversation is about looking to find ongoing revenue so we can bring on new staff, initiate new programs, have a sustainable, year-after-year, public safety enhancements. I think it's important to know that there were business owners on this committee, and some of whom are in businesses that don't have high profit margins, and yet, this was a recommendation that, I believe, was unanimous. And I agree that the payroll tax does not have the same implications as a property tax. I think that is starting to be a real burden. And it also has the benefit of growing as our population grows, so we can continue to provide the services as we have more residents. Lastly, I want to point out that even with the $12-an-hour wage earners that you've presented, at the higher amount, that would be a half hour of my work time a month that's being contributed towards the enhancement of the public safety service. So, that's another framework to look at that additional tax burden through. Thank you.
Greg?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I think this is an excellent report. I'm impressed with the direction that the subcommittee has taken with this. And I think that the mechanism, which would be the payroll tax, I think is much more preferable than, you know, looking at a property tax enhancement or, you know, some kind of five-year serial levy to do this. This is more sustainable over a long period of time, and I think that that's an important feature. I've got two questions, though. As, if we go through with this, and we're adding capacity in, you know, fire, police, and the other areas, the court system and everything else, how does this have, what effect does this collateral effect? effect does this collateral effect, does this have on our partners, say, in accounting, for example, in health and human services, who may not have the ability to ramp up and increase commensurately with the needs that will be subsequently created from, you know, increasing our, our capacity? Have anybody had those conversations?
Well, I'll just mention that we've been having a lot of conversation with our social service providers. So embedded within a lot of the strategies and programs that are moving forward are, is the partnership that's already there. And so some of that has, has been happening since we implemented the community court and some of the other programs that we've been working with. Have we done a full study to understand kind of that longer-term impact? No. But we are in a place right now where we're working really closely with our partners to understand how the demand of the system and making sure that we're not putting one area at a deficit as we consider strategies moving forward.
Yeah, that's, that's really my concern, that by us, you know, kind of stepping our game up, there are other parts of the system that don't have the capacity to step up commensurately with us and therefore creating some gaps and some leakages there that could impact the system in a negative way. The second question I have is more of an endgame question. And that is, from the perspective of residents who are afraid to come downtown, people who have public safety concerns in the neighborhoods, as well as business owners who are seeing the impact of an environment that is not conducive to a healthy community. And that is, you know, one is, is what are going to be the visual outcomes? What is the perception? How are we going to be able to change perception by adding capacity? And then, two, what are the real outcomes statistically and otherwise of being able to, you know, invest $22 million? What do I get from it? What do we get from it that's real and tangible that we can take away and say, you know, there's going to be a significant change to the look of downtown? There's going to be a significant change in what happens in WIT? What are the answers to those?
My guess, that's my cue.
Yeah.
So we could probably have an entire workshop on what levels of outcomes throughout all of this, throughout all of this plan, on what we're trying to achieve. But let me narrow in on, I think, what the elephant in the room is, which, well, maybe it's not. In my world, the elephant in the room is whether or not you're getting your calls for services answered, whether they're being done in a timely fashion or not, and whether or not you have enough police officers to be able to do, with discretionary time, to do the community policing activities that makes us a safer neighborhood. Those are the three. On average, our response time is going up 20% now. When we respond, it doesn't always mean you're going to like the answer we give you, but would you rather be heard here as a community member, which I'm acutely aware of right now, that sometimes there's no response. And maybe six hours later, we show up and say, I'm sorry, there's nothing we can do about this particular problem. It's not criminal in nature, even though I know it is really, really unsightly. Our goal is to try and get that to like a 20-minute response where you're maybe not hearing exactly what you want to hear, but at least you have a staff member that's being attentive to your needs is really, really important. And so reducing that amount of time that a person calls either non-emergency. Now, let me, let me frame this up. Our response to priority one and two calls is not the issue here. When you're in trouble and you need help, we come. And you get the, you get the, you get the cavalry. I mean, we come in force and we take care of our community the way we should take care of our community. Those livability issues is where everybody is feeling the pinch and the pain point. And if we can get to a place where we increase capacity, the first metric I think you'll see is fewer and fewer people saying, I had to wait four or five hours for a police officer or a CSO to come meet my needs. Whether they like the answer or not, or whether it gets resolved in that moment in time or not, just the sheer fact of being responsive to people is the right thing to do and it feels good for people. And they should expect that. Secondly, there's 80 calls for service a day on average that we don't even get to. And again, those are those livability calls for service. And so our hope is that through this expansion is that we start picking away at that. And so there's never, there's no police department that responds to 100% of all their calls for service for a variety of reasons. But our hope is that through this capacity is that we, again, start to perform a little better in that area where we're actually able to get to and respond to all those calls for service. Again, the answer you get may not be one that you like or even understandable, but you're actually getting the service that you're paying for, which is having a staff person, whether it's a CSO or a police officer or animal welfare officer or a crime prevention specialist, can connect with you and start working with you on, on your problem. And thirdly, by creating capacity in our system to be able to respond to these things also creates capacity out of every hour of discretionary time for police officers. And that's where a lot of the real crime prevention occurs. When you have police officers that can have time to be in the neighborhoods, not chasing calls for service, but can be in the neighborhoods, especially some of our neighborhoods in crisis that are seeing a lot of criminal activity, that can stop and have social contacts with people that are a little bit out of place, or stop cars that seem to be acting in a suspicious manner, those types of activities and ability to be able to do that is what creates a safer community. And so when, as we create discretionary time for officers, not only do we build a relationship with this community because we can stop in and say, hi, you know how many officers I have that would love to be able to stop in to a neighborhood association meeting and just say, I'm your officer. How's things going? That type of capacity is what we're trying to build in, in this plan. And so those three things, the average time it takes us to get to you, the fact that we can get to you at all, and the discretionary time in an officer's day, I think are the metrics that will, we can point to to show success. But the piece of that is it also has an emotional component to how people feel about their service they're getting. And so that's, that's really what I'm, in my wheelhouse, sir, that's what I'm trying to focus on getting us to with this, with building this plan.
Betty?
Thank you. Following up on what the chief just said, is there any plan to have police officers in the communities that are not in crisis?
Well, there again, there again, it speaks to that discretionary time because ideally, what we would love to do, and what I've been very successful in seeing in a deployment strategy, is getting to a geo-based policing philosophy where we have police officers anchored to districts for periods of time where they get to understand their neighborhoods, whether they're in crisis or not. You know, every once in a while, we'll have crisis here where everybody has to go. That's happening today. That will happen in the future regardless of whether we're 192 strong or 252 strong. That's going to happen. But as we build the capacity for discretionary time, it also allows us to have district integrity when we have enough officers to handle the problems in those neighborhoods in crisis without drawing the resources out of the other districts to be able to handle that. And so you have officers that actually can have district integrity, stay in their kind of home base area and work on, because every neighborhood has an issue. Some are just more compelling than others, some are more complex than others. But every neighborhood deserves to have their police officers in their neighborhood dealing with that. And so as we build that capacity with more discretionary time, our ability to respond to calls with multiple car response, which is happening more and more and more, right now it draws every resource I have in town. Joe talks about having, he's, he's out of ambulances by 10:00 AM almost every single day. So as we build capacity, I can handle those issues in those areas that are maybe a little bit in crisis without drawing the resources out of the other areas of the city so that police officers can be anchored to that geography.
A clerk in a grocery store recently said to me, I never see a police officer. And I, thinking it would be nice if they were walking through the grocery store or walking up and down the streets maybe, and riding the buses perhaps. And I think it's, it would be nice to get to know the people about, I think it's about, I'm trying to remember how long ago, but I think 15 years ago, there was a police officer who was in every neighborhood meeting in the neighborhoods I'm in. And I don't know whether they just took their own time or what, but they were there and people got to know them. And this is all very interesting, good work. I'm not, I want to think about it some more before I say I totally support any of it. I do wonder why there's 15 cents for Muni Court. Anybody tell me that?
Well, that was just taking a proportion of the distribution of those dollars in the programs.
I know, it's a proportion. I know it's not just 15 cents.
So it'd be like community court, mental health court, the addition of court staff to support those programs. There's also work within just a multitude of different programs, but those are the key ones. I'd say prosecutors are another big portion of that piece as well and making sure that we're stabilized with our staffing loans.
And they all need money.
Yeah.
As for the fire, which I think everybody likes the fire department, but if you, if you don't send the big trucks out every time, you'd be saving money, wouldn't you?
Yes. And that's the only way we're going to meet our climate recovery ordinance goals is by eliminating some of these low-acuity calls that they have a medical need, but it's not within the hour. So we run out of ambulances, but it's not always for a critical call.
But you, you wouldn't need more money than you need less.
That's true. And, but this, over the course of time, as we can direct people away from the 911 center and to their primary care provider, it's going to be much more effective for their health care.
Well, I agree. I remember when a big fire truck came to my neighbor's house some years ago and it turned out she just hurt her back. And I thought something terrible had happened. And I went over to ask her, they said, the fire truck and another car came because she... Okay, another question. And I don't know if I'm looking at this right or not, but on the chart that says example impacts employer, $500,000 payroll would only pay $85 a month, and a person who makes $20 an hour would pay $7 a month. It seems like a, like the individual person is being taxed much more highly than an employer. I mean, $7 a month if you only make $20 an hour is a lot of money.
Yes. And those, those three options were just intended to be conceptual models. And so that's a good question and would be part of the future discussion.
And was there any thought of charging, of exempting people who make below $20 an hour, for example?
That's one of the scenarios, is they looked at the impact to individuals that could be considered as you, as a potential model moves forward, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have three councilors in the queue, Claire and then Alan and then Jennifer. So take it away.
Thank you. So to Councilor Zelenka's remarks, so the proposal's not a flat tax or a fee, it's a percentage. So it still might, it's not truly progressive, as pointed out, but it's not a flat tax. So I think there could be some value in having some discussion at this table about some of the other options at a work session. But I don't think there's a lot of value in going through every one of the myriad of possible revenue options that the revenue team went through that we looked at in 2014. So I think a work session that may be focused on the three that rose to the top and maybe two others to help the public also understand kind of how we've sorted through or how the revenue, the team sorted through, and then our own sorting of those various options. You know, that, that I think is a work session that would have some value. You know, in addition to what Chief Skinner mentioned about the, the things that he really thinks about in terms of call for service and decreasing that time, I think there is also, in addition, in addition to that, there's the criminal activities that our beat officers simply cannot address and that we need dedicated detectives to take on the investigations, to build a case that can lead to prosecution for things like human trafficking, for example, and other criminals of that nature. And the addition of prosecutors, so we have a call-out in this plan for five detectives, additional prosecutions, as well as increasing capacity in our court. For many, from what I hear from my constituents, that's the other elephant that's not often explicitly called out. So we do have, you know, kind of the nuisance crimes or, you know, theft, but then we have these more organized criminal activities that really need some dedicated detectives to do the investigations. We have not had that capacity in many years. And I do hear from it, from constituents that, why aren't you dealing with this person? I know what's going on down the street from my house and nothing's happening. And so this plan calls that out in a way that I think really is important for us to notice.
Okay, Alan.
So my comments aren't on the content or the package. Actually, I think the plan is solid and it's very needed. It's really about our process and being successful. Without a process that's very transparent, that includes bringing the community along, it's going to make our work a lot harder to do, in my experience being on the council. I agree with Greg Evans's focus on, on the outcomes. When we have been successful in the past, there, there's some hallmarks of things that we've done that have made us be successful. One, we had an enormous public engagement process. We had a transparent process. We, people need to feel like that this is the best idea, that they were brought along, that they understood this. I'm not saying we need to do four meetings on all the different options, but we need time to process this stuff. And we also tell them exactly what they're going to buy. We've got a good list and, and what that will get them, the outcomes Greg was talking about. What benefit are they going to get directly by paying for this? And it, and it also needs to be equitable benefits. So they need to perceive, like we did with the, with the road bond, that there are projects all over the city so that everybody feels like they get something in this. So that equitable spread of benefits. And then finally, a rock-solid accountability mechanism. We need to prove that we, that what we said we were going to spend the money on is what we spent the money on. And, and, and so that's that whole promises made, promises kept thing. And when we've done all of that stuff, we've been successful. When we haven't been successful, we've short-circuited that process. And so I, I hope that when we walk through this and get to a council decision to do something about this, that we take that in mind and that we walk through those very deliberately and be as transparent as possible and bring the community along as, as much as possible. So far, we've had a small group meeting on their own and this gets rolled out. That's insufficient in my mind.
Okay, Jennifer.
Yeah, I just, and Kevin, interrupt me if I get this wrong, but I wanted to respond to what Betty said. The committee did actually discuss exemptions, the concept of exemptions, how we felt about that. And my feeling from the committee was that we really wanted to keep it as simple as possible so that people really understood what they're paying, who's paying, everyone's involved, and also recognizing that everyone in our community needs and benefits from an adequate public safety package in our community. And so we felt like everybody being involved and everyone having a stake in it was really important. Because we could spend a lot of time talking about every little possible exemption and we just felt like that was not something we wanted to do.
Okay, I have two people in the queue, and I also want to say something. So Jet, Emily and then Chris, but brief, please.
I'll be quick. I agree that everyone will benefit from this and I think therefore everyone should be involved, even if it's a small amount. Everyone needs public safety. And I'd also like to point out that another small group recently went through the large 2014 list of revenue sources for the parks, bond and levy. So it's not like no one has looked at this. I really don't want to go through the 2014 list of revenues in work sessions when we have so many things to look at. I do agree that we need public involvement, but I also think we need to recognize this is an urgent problem. We're going to need, the bridge is going to end and, and this is an ongoing crisis. And I, I would like to get it moving forward as soon as possible. There are some time restrictions. Thank you.
Chris?
Yeah, quickly. I, I probably shouldn't expect to have a committee bring a recommendation and have everybody else go, oh, yep, sure, sounds good, let's go. So I, I agree, in concept, we probably should take the time to talk about it within the full council context. I think the work the committee did can help to truncate that so that we can do it more expeditiously. But I think we should at least have some conversation in this forum about what some of the final options were and what some of the thinking process was, if for nothing else, because it will provide an explanation to the community of how we got there and what that was. So I would, I would agree that having some more conversation about how we arrived at where we did is probably worthwhile. But as, as before, the committee did do a lot of good work, so I don't think we need to completely reinvent that wheel. But I do think it is worthwhile to have some conversation at this forum so that people can understand, you know, how we got there. So there is a, there is a balance. I think that could work just. So there is a, there is a balance, or I think that could work just fine.
Do they have a report? Huh? Is there a report?
So, yes, so that, this is what I was going to mention. So the first thing is, there is a massive report. It lists all of those budget items. It does refer to the audit process, a lot of questions that you have, that is available. So I can see you're nodding at me, so I know Kristi has something to say about that. But just a couple more things. You know, the value of this is that it's related to other things that we are also doing, that this is a very holistic approach to community safety. It is also related to what we're talking about from the tax study, in terms of how we integrate our systems, and the two things go together, and there's a huge value to having those conversations concurrently. The other thing is, I just want to, I want to offer two things. One is that you have a council kind of retreat on the 23rd, so that offers an opportunity. Public safety is one of your key areas of focus, so it offers an opportunity for you to have another conversation and an opportunity when also Mike will be at the table, you'll all be at the table, which feels critical to me, that we not be missing a counselor or two while this conversation goes on. And then a reminder that you have set an 18-month deadline on this, and so a certain amount of deliberate action is really called for in order to be able to meet that deadline. And we have a whole month from really the end of February until April 1st, when we will not have either council meetings at all or a full quorum of counselors. So just wanting everyone to be really clear about the, not wanting to lose momentum and not wanting to lose track of a very fixed deadline that we have, of wanting to have, be as far along as possible in this process. So with that, I know Kristi has something to say.
You mentioned the report, and I just wanted to let everybody know that for whoever wants to look at it, it is posted online.
Excellent.
So it is, it is robust, exhaustive, weighs 10 pounds, try to look at it online. And then, so, do we have enough clear?
Yeah, I think what we will do is, obviously, have another series of conversations and conversations. We'll think a little bit about some of the questions you asked. Also, how do we ensure that there's some conversation of committee's information and how to kind of bring that along as well? And we'll spend a little time thinking about doing a workshop on the 23rd. That might actually be an interesting time to have some of that conversation, because there's some people that are, everybody will be there, and there's a little bit more time. We can talk a little bit about that as well.
Right, right. Okay. Thank you all. It was really an excellent report. I'm inspired by the work. Thank you to the counselors who did that work and the folks in the community who are in the audience. Thank you very much, and we're adjourned.